Welcome, everyone, to the Thursday, July 21st, 2022 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, the county of Humboldt Planning Commission will be meeting, the meeting will be held virtually pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 until further notice. Just go to the county website and you can see all the ways to join us. With that, I will call the meeting to order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trip, roll call, please.
Alan Bongio?
Here.
Noah Levy?
Here.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
Mike Newman?
Here.
Melanie McAver? Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
And Thomas Mulder?
Present, virtually.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, Trip. Looks like we have six members, so we definitely have a quorum. And maybe Melanie will be joining us a little bit late. All right. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications at this time.
All right. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment, and that's the time when anybody can comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on anything, talk to the commission, feel free to come up to the mic. And I will also see if there is anybody in the audience that wants to. Why is that not? Looks like we have some attendees. Is there anybody that is virtually with us that wishes to speak? All right, seeing none. I'll close public comment. And we'll go to the consent agenda. I'll go through all one item that's on the consent agenda tonight that isn't continued, and that's the Lost Coast Lady. Is there anybody LLC conditional use permit in the petroleum area? Is there anybody who wishes to have that pulled on either the commission or from the audience?
I want to comment on it.
Okay. Would you like to have it pulled then so you can comment? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, so I'm going to pull it. Do you need a staff report done, or you just want to make a comment about it?
I don't think I need a staff.
Okay. Well, then with that, I'll open it up for public comment and let you come up and...
Does the staff want to give a report before?
I did prepare one if the commission.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then go ahead, Abby. I'm sorry.
No, it's your will, right? Thank you, Trip. All right. Whoops. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Abby Strickland, and tonight I'm going to present the Lost Coast Lady LLC, which is in the petroleum area, application number 11599. The, this is just a general location. It's kind of hard to see the bright blue on the map now with this photo, but it's in the petroleum area. The applicant's seeking a conditional use permit and a special permit. The conditional use permit's required because the applicant is seeking commercial cannabis cultivation on a parcel that's less than one acre in size, which would be 2,500 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. They are also seeking a special permit for development within the streamside management area. And the project is going to be sharing propagation space as well as water storage, a water source, and drying activities with the project on the adjacent parcel under the same ownership. And that's application 11597, which is a zoning clearance certificate for 4,000 square feet of existing mixed light and 1,000 square feet of outdoor. The water source for both projects is a registered point of diversion from an unnamed stream, which is tributary to the Matol. The projected annual water usage is 66,500 gallons for both projects, and the proposed water storage is equal to their annual water usage. The energy for the project is provided by PG&E, although they'll also have a backup generator on site. And drying occurs on the adjacent parcel, as I said. However, trimming and packaging occurs at a licensed third-party facility. The parcel outlined in red is the project we're hearing tonight, and the adjacent parcel is a zoning clearance certificate, which is currently on John Ford's desk. So we're right on the brink of approval for that project. And lastly, staff is recommending approval and that you find the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the CMM L U O pursuant to Section 15614 of the State Secret Guidelines, and that you make all required findings for approval of the Lost Coast Lady LLC conditional use permit and special permit subject to the recommended conditions. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. I will open this up for public comment then.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this and the notice in the mail. We are neighbors to the parcel in question. You know, good friends with the applicant, has nothing to do with the applicant. I mean, she grew up with our kids, so... Just a little history on that parcel. My family owns the land kind of surrounding the parcel. It's a three-acre parcel within, basically within the ranch. It was sold in 1934 from the Cummings family to A.H. Thompson, and it's gone through the hands. The Cummings family kept rights to pick fruit, kept rights to the trees. The trees subsequently got cut down from the prior owner, and he left the country, and now it's turned into a pot farm. It's rural residential. It's not, it's not a commercial property, as you guys know. I see you have an ordinance that allows for commercial, you know, special permits for commercial operations. You know, there is a, they have right to take water off, it's off my property. In the summertime, they take all the water. There's no, you know, in the wintertime, it flows a lot of water. In the summertime, it basically goes dry. So it was sold deed recorded November 3rd, 1934, in Book 216 of deeds, page 367. So that kind of outlines what that parcel has as far as crossing our property. It's not a commercial right-of-way. It's a residential right-of-way. We really don't want it, you know, to be honest. There've been growing pot there for quite a while now. It's basically unpermitted. It's not a commercial, commercial property. Really, that's, that's... The lights are on. It stinks. My wife, you know, has kids camps. She has ladies camps. And, you know, we have people around. We do cattle work right out in front of there. If the gate's open, we got to run up there and close the gate. We don't need any more traffic, you know? So like I said, we love Marina. It's not, has nothing to do with her, but it has to do with the, with the property use within our property, and it's residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? All right.
I have a question. Is the diversion of water occurring in summer months or all year round, or how does that work?
So a condition of the project would require the applicant to obtain an additional 60,000 gallons of water storage, so they would have enough water to forbear through the summer months. Their diversion allows 78,000 gallons plus per year, so their diversion of 66,500 gallons is under that. I can't speak to whether they were diverting out of season previously, but this is also domestic use, so some of that may have been domestic-related. However, it could have been used for irrigation. I'd have to ask the applicant.
All right. I see, I see we at least have the consultant for the applicant, Praj White, here. So I'm going to go to public 4549 first, and then I'll go to Praj last. So go ahead. 4549?
Hello.
Hi. Welcome.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the, one of the planning directors asked my question, which is, is there going to be a forbearance period to the water? Has to be collected and stored during the winter months? My concerns mirror Sterling's concerns, which are approving of rural residential property for commercial use in addition to the access issues. And my third concern is that it's within the streamside management area, and the Planning Commission and the Planning Department continue to make special considerations within the streamside management area. Like, it doesn't seem like the streamside management area is being respected. And, you know, the Matol River has had millions and millions and millions of dollars poured into restoration efforts over the last 40 years, and water continues to be drawn from these unnamed tributaries. And there are cumulative effects that occur. And I just can't quite understand why these projects keep getting approved when they're in the streamside management area.
All right. Thank you. Does staff want to?
Thank you.
Want to reply to any of those?
We'll respond to all questions.
Okay, that's fine. I just thought, since Praj was the only other hand up. So go ahead, Praj.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. I am pleased that this project has come before you this evening. This is a 1.0 project that was filed on December 2nd, 2016. The project is for 2,500 square feet. It's one of the smallest projects that has come before this commission. The access to the project is from a paved road with a centerline stripe on it. The power is from PG&E. There is a special permit for a streamside management encroachment. This was a previous existing cultivation prior to regulations coming forward. I personally was on-site for a meeting between the landowners and Kate from the Water Board and staff from Humboldt County and Planning Department. We discussed the concern and the proximity. We looked at other options on the site to make things move, and we agreed that the best option was that it stays where it's at. The site grading is such that there's several feet of embankment preventing any discharge to the stream. And we worked with the department and hired a botanist that went out and made an assessment along the stream, and we have a proposal to enhance and improve the riparian corridor, removing invasives and planting more plants in that area. So basically, we have a no-threat discharge issue, and the closest residence to this property is about 1,000 feet away to the north. And to answer the question, there is an issued right to divert and use by the State of California, State Water Resource Control Board, and it's been issued and in compliance. And as the process goes, by approving this tonight, it allows the building permits and the development to improve this to be less impacting than originally constructed. With that, I'm available for any questions. Let me know. If you have any, I'll be around.
All right. Thank you, Praj. Does anybody have any questions for Praj? All right. Seeing none. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? All right. Seeing none. I'll close the public comment, and I'll bring it back to staff.
So I will just add that there are two conditions in the, on the project. One is to complete all the remediation work that was outlined in the Riparian Impact Evaluation Report, which was reviewed by the Water Board and by CDFW. And another report requires them to submit annual monitoring reports and document restoration conditions and essentially monitor all the replanting that they're proposing to do adjacent to the cultivation area and the streamside management area.
Chair Bongio, a couple of things I just want to add in response to some of the comments from the public. The zoning of the property is actually agricultural exclusive, and so it's, there was comments about it being rural residential, and it may very well feel that way. Agriculture-exclusive is actually the only zone district in the county's ordinance that doesn't principally permit residences. They're supposed to be associated with farms and agriculture on the property. And then, secondly, the approval of this permit would enable the applicant to obtain building permits to develop the water storage. And so not only is that a condition of approval, but approval of this is actually needed to get the building permits to develop that storage.
Thank you. Any other que, oh, go ahead, Brian.
I'm prepared to make a motion whenever the rest of the commissioners are done with their questions.
Is there any other questions?
I just wanted to confirm that the additional storage, I think 60,000 gallons of additional water storage must be in place prior to the start of the 2023 forbearance period for cultivation to be, to occur?
Yes, you almost. You almost read that, like, verbatim. So that's true. And I also stated that photo documentation or a site visit from planning to ensure that the tanks are full would be required before conducting or commencing operations.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts? And Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution to take the following action: One, that we find the Planning Commission has considered the addendum to the adopted Mitnag Deck for the CMM L U O as described by Section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines; Two, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit; and Three, adopt the resolution approving Lost Coast Lady Farms LLC project as recommended by staff subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Brian.
Through the chair, point of order. If Melanie would like to vote on this, we need to take another roll call vote.
Okay. Thank you, Trip. So go ahead and let's have another roll call vote. Come on, Melanie. Show up on time. Please. You're killing us.
Alan Bongio?
Present.
Noah Levy?
Present.
Brian Mitchell?
Present.
Mike Newman?
Here.
Melanie McAver?
Here.
Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
And Thomas Mulder?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Got a full house now. All right. So we have a motion. Did we have a second on that motion? I'll second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, Trip. Roll call, please.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
No.
Mike, Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mike Newman?
No. Was that a tie vote, or was that, I think I missed one. 4-3, that's what I thought.
Motion passes 4-3.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I, so the motion carries and it passes. Thank you. All right. So I kind of got ahead of myself and went on to, to do things that were pulled from consent. So now we need to have a motion to approve consent, which is the two items, item number one, which was, or item number two, which is Baker Creek Quarry Permit Renewal in the Whitethorn area, and it's continued to a date uncertain. And the Royal Gold Use Permit for self-soil manufacturing in Fieldbrook, which is also continued to a date uncertain, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move items two and three on the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. And motion to second. Any discussion? Trip, roll call vote.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
And Mike Newman?
Yes.
All right. Vote carries unanimous. All right. So next, we will go to item number G, public hearings. And the first item is Ford Parcel Map Subdivision and Coastal Development Permit in the McKinleyville area. Take a staff report.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Cliff Johnson. I'm going to be presenting the Ford Parcel Map and Coastal Development Permit. It's located in the McKinleyville area. At the end of Myers Road, you can see here with the red pin, it's a approximately 1.17-acre parcel that is being proposed to subdivide into four new parcels and roughly 16,000 square foot remainder parcel that has an existing residence on it. The zoning of the property is residential with a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The general plan allows a density of three to seven units per acre. And the proposed subdivision complies with all of the county's subdivision standards, with the exception of some of the road requirements. And so that's the reason that this is on the public hearing agenda and not on the consent agenda. The applicants are asking for an exception to some of the road requirements that come out of the subdivision ordinance. And in particular, the subdivision ordinance requires a Category 4 road for all urban situations for subdivisions. And this is a section of the subdivision ordinance right here. The noteworthy sections are that the traveled way needs to be 18 to 20 feet. The right-of-way width needs to be 50 feet. And there needs to be a surface of seal coat or asphalt concrete. The subdivision ordinance, or I should say county code, does allow for exceptions to be granted to some of these requirements. And so the required finance for an exception are that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the property, exceptions necessary for preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right, and that the granting of the exception will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to properties in the area. So the exception requests that the applicant are asking for are to allow for a right-of-way of 40 feet along Myers, which would actually coincide with the existing right-of-way, which is 40 feet. The county does support that exception request. And then for the proposed new access road, the applicant is requesting that it be allowed at 22 feet and that there not be any sidewalks or a landscape strip. And the county is proposing or requesting that all of those, that there be sidewalks, there be a landscape strip, and that there also be a wider traveled surface. So just want to show you right here again, this is the access road that you're basically looking at. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead, Brian.
Does, does having the wider road width change the layout in any way? Or what are the, what are the effects of denying the request?
I don't believe it would change the layout. It would just, you'd be looking at somewhere between five and 10 feet on either side that kind of enlarges that, that width.
Any other questions for staff?
I just want to be certain here. Thanks, Chair. Cliff, does this, this ends right there in that subdivision. Is that correct? There is no throughway with the addition of these parcels being developed?
That is correct. Yeah. I'll actually go back to the...
Yeah, go back to that other...
Aerial image here.
So the access is the road that's going left to right. Myers there. It's kind of hard to see from this...
That's the, the county road, and then you're going to have the proposed new access road that comes south from that, basically right through where that red pin is.
And ends at the last parcel that's being proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, because I'm, I may be getting this slightly mixed up with the other kind of similar one, but is this the one there where the exception request is simply to, that they are, the applicant is agreeing to put sidewalks along Meyer Road adjacent to the parcels, but does not want to put curb gutter and sidewalk along the Sophie Road? Or?
Yes, I believe that's the case.
Okay. So there would be sidewalks along Meyer, just not, they would like to not have them on the, the one that extends south. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment. All right. Bob, did you want to present something?
I believe the applicant's agent is here to go ahead and speak on the exception request. In the back of the Public Works memo on page two, it lays out what the subdivision improvement requirements would be should the exception request be approved by your commission. So after hearing what the applicant has to say and you deliberate on it, if you do decide to approve it, you can refer to the alternative Section 1.8 and, 1.8B and 2.6C in the Public Works memo.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. I'd ask anybody in the public that wants to speak on it first and the applicant speak last. That way they can answer, address questions that possibly are brought up. But if there's anybody who wishes to speak, now's your chance. Either here or on, with this, on Zoom. But I don't see anybody putting their hand up, so go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, commission. My name is Michael Pulley. I'm a land surveyor with Points West Surveying. I'm the agent for the applicant. The applicant is Ford Properties. As Bob pointed out, I think, you know, Bob came up with an alternative for the curb gutter sidewalk on Myers, that it's better than what we had on our tentative map. So we're happy with the public works condition that would have us kind of extend the curb gutter around and, and to the end of the Myers Avenue right-of-way, where it becomes the Lily Road right-of-way. As you noted, basically what we think is that it makes no sense to have curb gutter sidewalk and a 200-foot-long access road in a dead-end road in this subdivision. We've kind of constricted on the site because we're trying to preserve the original farmhouse and shop that's been on the property, so that's why we have the large remainder parcel that we leave. There's also a 30-foot drainage easement for MCSD that basically serves the airport business park that comes through the parcel that's undevelopable. So we're trying to maximize what we can do with the parcel with those constraints. So I'm hoping the commission will consider the fact that, you know, I don't think curb gutter sidewalk is really a necessary thing. If you look at that Public Works memo, page two, which is your page 30 in the staff report, essentially we'd be doing an 18-foot-wide traveled way in the subdivision. We'd have a 10-foot PUE adjacent to that, and we would dedicate that 22-foot right-of-way over the roadway as we have it in the subdivision now, including the fire truck turnaround that would be squeezed in next to the existing shop. So that was the reason for the exception request, is there's just no way for us to fit a 50-foot right-of-way onto this parcel and leave any developable area on any of the parcels.
All right. Might say, is there any questions for the app? Let's see, is there any questions for the app, for the consult, I should say? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will close. I'll ask one more time, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? But not seeing any. I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission. So what are your thoughts?
Well, having heard Mr. Pully, I wouldn't mind hearing Mr. Bronkle if he's willing to state the case for denying that exception request.
Public Works has conditioned the project consistent with what should be provided for urban areas, which is providing curb gutter sidewalk in urban areas. This road is a short cul-de-sac road, as the applicant had pointed out. And they believe that the road is best served by simply a paved road surface. And ultimately, it's up to your commission to decide if such an exception request should be approved. Public Works does see the merit in it, however, in being consistent in the way that Public Works treats projects, it's been conditioned with curb gutter sidewalk.
Fair enough, thank you.
Melanie, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question along similar lines. So is there a concern from Public Works that the remaining part of the parcel will be developed and therefore, you know, that might necessitate that extension of the sidewalk? Or is it just consistency?
It's overall consistency for projects being developed in the urban area.
Thank you.
I put my hand up, so I'll, I don't see anybody else wanting to speak. I think this is very similar to the one we saw, just, I'm going to say it was a couple, three means ago, off of Myrtle Town, that was Glenwood.
Hedgewood.
Hedgewood, you're right, thank you. Anyhow, I, you know, being in the development business, I, I can't see the need for all the curb and gutter and sidewalk now. You know, it used to be we had to have curb and gutter because they mandated that we take all the water to the, the street. Now, you can't take any of the water to the street. You have to keep it all on your, on your site. So it doesn't, you don't need the curb and gutter anymore. And it just, from a financial standpoint, it's so hard to make projects go. Anything you can do to cut the costs down, I, I'll be supportive of. And I, you know, being a dead-end road that's never going to go through, we're not going to see any more growth. I guess there is the potential for ADUs on these, but with that, there's no, they, they get freebies to, to do it, so it's not really in our, I guess, control that's set by the state. So I think I'd be supportive of the, the way that the applicant is asking for. And I see Thomas has his hand up, go ahead.
So I just wanted to piggyback and say I'm, I'm in support of maybe a wider roadway and just that surface be asphalt, so that way there's area for traveling like bikes and walking and stuff like that, or even gravel. But I'm, if, I believe we've, in my opinion, heard, heard enough to not require curb gutter and sidewalk, but maybe I'm wrong, but I just was throwing out what I've heard. And I'm not there in person, so I could be missing something. But so far from what I've heard, I think we could support removing curb gutter and sidewalk.
I'd just like to say for the record that as McKinleyville has developed, you know, it's really been to the detriment of the community that sidewalks and curbs and gutters haven't been consistently required from the beginning. And we have this result, which is a hodgepodge of places that are severely unsafe here, next to really well-thought-out areas with nice walking paths. And I just want to voice support for including sidewalks wherever feasible. I think in this case, it sounds like we'd have to make a trade-off between having the number of units or the, the ability to do the project. So in this limited case, I'd be willing to support it. But generally, you know, it's not because I don't support sidewalks, but for the particulars of the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mike.
I, I think it makes sense to not include the, the sidewalks and, and gutters, curbs on this since it does dead-end in there and that there's no through traffic. I, I still am wavering about the width of the road. I'm 22 feet. I suppose the width of a vehicle is six and a half, maybe a big pickup truck, seven feet or eight?
I think it's closer to eight.
Yeah, so it still has enough room going through if there's two throughways, so 22 feet. And I'm certain that probably without sidewalks in that, that there would be either grass or gravel to the side of the roadway. But if I can ask staff, I just want to be certain, part of the condition is asphalt on that new road, is that correct?
That's correct, to be a paved road.
Okay, thank you.
So what was your recommendation or the regulations on the width of the road?
The applicant is proposing the road to be an 18-foot-wide travel lane, which is the base category four type road.
So that would be sufficient?
That's more than adequate for the number of units that are being served out there.
And do you ever have projects where you require just a sidewalk on one side of the road? Or does it always have to be on both sides?
The sidewalk needs to be able to serve all the lots being created. So it's conceivable that you can have a road that shoved all the way on one side of a property line, and therefore the curb gutter sidewalk would only need to be along one side of the road, because all the lots are served from that side.
All right. Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion on this one, though? Go ahead, Brian. He seemed to be the man.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resol, excuse me. This is, okay. I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution to take the following action. One, find that the Ford minor subdivision and coastal development permit is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15183 of the state SEQA guidelines. Two, make all the required findings for approval of the project. And three, approve the proposed Ford minor subdivision and coastal development permit subject to the recommended conditions with the alternative mentioned by Public Works, reducing the travel lane as proposed by the applicant.
I'll second.
Director?
Could I ask the motion maker to also include findings for approving the street exception? And I would propose that the rationale be the items that Commissioner Bondio outlined in terms of the reasons to not install it.
Okay, so I would add in there the findings that due to the particulars of this site and the fact that it's a dead-end road, we find that it's not necessary to have sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
Agreed.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Trip, roll call vote, please.
Who's the seconder? Sorry. Just typing in the conditions. All righty. Melanie McAlver?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bondio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mike Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. Trip, motion carries unanimous. All right. That brings us to item number two, beer minor subdivision coastal development permit and special permit in the McKinleyville area as well. And we'll take a staff report, please.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name's Cliff Johnson again, and I will be presenting the beer parcel map, coastal development permit and special permit. This is also in the McKinleyville area. It's a roughly 1.5 acre parcel that is located approximately a half mile off of Murray down Boiler Avenue. And the proposal is to divide this into two parcels. Both of the proposed lots are developed with an existing single-family residence. And so the, the proposed subdivision would potentially facilitate the ability for one additional unit for each of the parcels. The parcels, sorry, the parcel itself is owned residential, single-family with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. And both proposed parcels would be over 20,000 square feet in gross lot area. However, proposed parcel two would be approximately 16,600 square feet of net lot area. And so for that, the applicant is requesting an exception, which does require a special permit. Special permit is also required because this parcel is located in the Alquist Priolo Fault Hazard Zone. And so subdivisions in that zone do require a special permit. And they also require a fault hazard evaluation to be submitted by a licensed geologist and then peer reviewed. And, and so that has happened here, and the findings were that the subdivision would not cause any potential dangerous situations or any safety issues. So this is showing the proposed subdivision. You can see the lot line basically running down from the, the north to the south. The, and this again is, is scheduled for public hearing, not consent, because there are some exceptions to the road standards that are being requested. The applicant's requesting that instead of the 50-foot required right-of-way, they be permitted to subdivide off of a 40-foot right-of-way, and that is the existing right-of-way on Boiler Avenue. The county is supporting that exception request. The applicant is also asking to have an exception to the requirement to pave Boiler Avenue, and then also to the requirement for curb gutter, parking lane, sidewalks, and landscaping along the frontage of the parcel along Boiler Avenue. The applicant's requesting, is proposing an alternative to the, the road standards, which is that they would pave the first 200 feet from Murray to a width of 20 feet. County staff has discussed this, and if the Planning Commission is supportive of the exception request, Public Works Department believes that it might be more appropriate to pave the first 400 feet to a width of 10 feet, and that that would help to increase, mitigate for dust generation over a wider, longer portion of Boiler Avenue. And so with that, I, you have to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Cliff. I'll open this up for public comment then. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this?
Hi there. Jesse Buffington with Points West Surveying. I'm the agent for the applicant. So yeah, basically, our, our thought process on, on this is that we're trying to ask for improvements that are in line with the scale of the project. We're, we've, we've got an existing lot, already has two residences on it, and we're just splitting the two units. We understand that we are on a pretty long, we're on, basically it's almost half-mile from Murray Road, which is the closest paved road. It is a gravel road. The idea of paving the whole thing obviously isn't financially feasible for the project, but what we're trying to offer is something to at least get started along the way of having a paved road in the future. I did sort of a rough calculation of the development potential along Bowlier, and it seems like there's maybe potential for about 30, 30 additional lots in, in the future if, if most of the properties there were developed to their potential. And obviously, that's not going to happen quickly or in the next couple of years even. But to get started, someone needs to be the first one to pave. And obviously, it's not going to be a project like this that can pave a half-mile. But I think our offer that we came up with of, of paving, we were offering 200 feet at a 20-foot width, but what Bob mentioned was that maybe it would be more useful to the neighborhood to do 400 feet long at a 10-foot width. And that, we're, we're totally fine with that. I think that actually makes good sense. And the curb gutter and sidewalk in this case, there's no curb gutter sidewalk until you get to Murray Road, which is, like I said, is almost a half-mile north of our property. And it just, it would, it would be out of character with the neighborhood. And again, the financial, the financial aspect of it would make the project, project not really feasible. So we really appreciate any consideration you could give, give towards this. I think it's a pretty simple project. If we didn't have that Alquist Priolo Fault Hazard Zone, we'd actually just be under SB9 and would be able to do the project without having to go through the, the hearing process. But because of that, we did have to do the fault hazard evaluation for the project. So that was another added cost. So it's already pretty expensive just to split two existing houses. So anything, anything you guys could do to help is appreciated.
Thank you. Any questions for Jesse? All right, thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. What's your thoughts?
My thoughts are, why do they have to pave this when there's already existing homes there and they're just splitting the half because it's your regulation? I mean, it's not impacting any of the neighbors because the homes are already there, right?
When the separate lots are created, there's the availability to add additional dwelling units on the property, which creates-
On the ADUs?
Additional growth. The, the biggest concern that Public Works has in urbanized areas where development has been constructed close to the road is addressing dust that comes up from increased traffic along such a road.
They're not going to be building additional homes there? They, the homes are already there, right? Do I understand that correct? Except for if they were to put in ADUs.
Correct.
So, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to be certain. Where exactly is the paving going to be for this project?
It will be on Bowlier, and it will start approximately 200 feet south of Murray Road, which is where the existing pavement ends. And it will continue to the south for a distance of either 20 feet wide for 200 feet or 10 feet wide for 200 feet.
So if it's 20 feet or 400 feet, 10 feet wide from, can we get the map up there a minute? Go ahead, Jesse. I normally don't, but I'm going to let you-
Okay, thank you. Well, my, my thought on this was, I thought what, what Cliff and I had talked about was, was starting the pavement at Murray Road so that there was, there was paving starting at the existing paving and just basically that that would be the starting point of, of eventually paving all of Bowlier.
So what we're talking about is right at Murray Road, which is developed with asphalt-
Exactly.
At the start of Boyer, is all gravel there, and it's pretty narrow. I know I've looked down that way and I'm going, wow, there's houses really down there.
There's a half-mile of houses down that road.
And I'm looking at this map here, and this development is almost all the way down to the end of it.
It's the second from the last on the, on the west side.
Yeah, so how far, how close does it come then to the development if we go the 400 feet, 10 feet wide?
1,600 feet.
That's 1,600 feet, all the way to the proposed development for the project?
Our initial, what we, what we initially were going to propose was just paving 200 feet, like the frontage of our property, and then going towards Murray Road to the north. But we, we thought that maybe the, the public was better served by starting the pavement at the north and that it might encourage other people to possibly develop in the future. Because there's, if you look at it, there's, there's a pretty big parcel- Because there's, if you look at it, there's, there's a pretty big parcel about a third of the way up on the west. And then, yeah, exactly, that one has potential for about 12 units. And then there's another one that has access, it's to the north and west. It's actually separated from Bowlier a little bit, but their access, I did a lot line adjustment on that one a year or so ago. That one has potential for about eight parcels.
Yeah.
So the, it would get the pavement started to those.
It, it makes total sense, and I'm glad that both the applicant and the county has come up with a good solution for all the residents along there, and that's, that's great. I, I would like to see the 400 feet at 10 feet, at least get this party started on paving to help with the dirt and dust and, and all of that along that road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to comment, well, actually, he doesn't, he doesn't need to be up here. It's not a question. It's really just a comment on his letter, which I appreciated that they didn't just sort of seek to not do any paving at all, but that they did make the case that they could, they could start it and encourage subsequent development to continue the paving. And I also just wanted to confirm, though, because leaving the paving to one side, there's still the question of the sidewalks and gutters, and that, as required, what I, what I recall from the, from the exception request letter for this one is that if they were to be required to put in the sidewalks, it would be all the way at the end, nearly 2,000 feet from the existing sidewalks. Is that correct?
About a half-mile away.
1,600, yeah. I mean, yeah. Again, as Brian has already said with regard to the last one, I, I agree that the sort of inconsistency of sidewalks and no sidewalks in McKinleyville is, is a problem, and, and I would like to err on the side of supporting sidewalks. But in this particular case, to put in the sidewalks for those two parcels with existing residences, almost a half-mile from the rain, from the next sidewalk, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, thanks.
I'm gonna comment. I, I agree, it doesn't make any sense. You have these sidewalks to nowhere, which are ridiculous. But I, I'm concerned on the paving about consistency. Where did the 200 versus 400 come from? As I've, just about every project we've had come before us, it's the first 20 feet has to be paved on the road. I mean, am I missing something? Is it, I mean, we approve lots of projects, mostly cannabis, and I mean, we're approving Jeep trails that we're calling Class Four roads, and we make them pave the first 20 feet of it. So why are we saying 200 to 400 here? It just doesn't make sense to me.
The issue that's being addressed is dust in a urban environment where there are smaller lots and the development has been built close to the road versus projects way out in the hills where you're on 80-acre or larger parcels, and the homes, the ranches are all far away from the road, and they're not impacted by dust from people driving up and down the road. In an urban environment, the idea is that by paving the road, it keeps the dust down so that the front yard and the backyard don't all get covered in dust from people driving up and down the road. Typically, with any road, with any non-county maintained road that abuts a county road, the requirement under the encroachment ordinance is to have that encroachment paved for the initial 25 or 50 feet, depending upon the type of development that it is. What the applicant is proposing to do in this case is understand that this is an urban environment, and there is a potential for nuisance dust associated with it. And by offering to pave a certain square footage, that it would go ahead and help reduce the over amount, overall amount of dust that would occur on the road. And by starting the paving closer to Murray Road, that's where the greatest number of vehicles are going to be passing by, and that affords the greatest mitigation to those properties. As an example, the subject property is at the end of the road, where there's just a couple of properties there, not many cars are going to be passing by it. However, the first house in off of Murray Road, all the cars pass by it. So it's a much greater traffic volume, and, and those properties closer to Murray Road suffer from dust a lot more than, say, where the subject property is.
And I would totally agree with that if, if we were doing a subdivision and dividing this land up down there. But all we're doing is, the same two houses that are there, they're just going to have two different parcels. So there's not going to be any difference in traffic. Now, if they come back with something to propose, I would say that's when the conditions should be put on. But it seems to me it should be the bare minimum now. I mean, I think the, the applicant's being very generous. I, I don't know. I, I feel for them, what they're going to have to pay to have that 400 feet or whichever it is, 200 feet if it's 20 feet wide paved. So I'm not gonna, they're bringing it, they're saying they'll do it all. I won't fight it, but it seems like they, they're given too much.
So if we're pretty much done, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, Thomas has his hand up, so go ahead, Thomas.
I can't see you, Thomas.
And then, then you may. You there, Tom?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm here. So for me, I'm just, I have a little bit of confusion how all these lots originally got created without the pavement in the first place. That kind of is a real confusion for me, and I feel it possibly a little unfair to basically have to do, what's that, 20 feet by 200 feet to put in two ADUs? Because that's basically the development potential unless I'm missing something.
They're not even proposing that.
Well, that's, that's, I think, at the most, they could put in ADUs there if, if there's two, but maybe I'm missing something there. It's not a huge development potential for having to put in that much asphalt. That's just my opinion. And if, if you do condition it to pave the road, I would highly encourage that we stick with whatever the distance is by 20 feet wide, so that way we encourage a nice paved roadway in, if there's future other splitting and development on that road rather than 10 feet. I just think it'll be well-served for long-term, us, long-term use, and that's it.
Thank you, Thomas. Is there any more discussion?
I believe this, I, I agree with Thomas again. If you're going to, if you have the potential to have multiple units on there down the road, then it would seem to me that you would do the first 20 feet correctly, you know, the way it should be. And then if there's future development, they can continue that 20-foot wide road. So I would think this shorter the better and do it the way you need it to be in case there is future development. But I'm, I'm also on the side of, all they're asking for is to divide the property. And so I would probably err on saying they shouldn't have to do anything, but.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
So Chair, I'd like to move that we find this project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines, make all the required findings and approval for approval of the project, and approve the proposed beer minor subdivision special permit and coastal development permits project, subject to the recommended conditions. Can we put those up there real quick? What the suggested alternatives were? Was it without curbs and sidewalks? And I'm in agreement, I'd been going back and forth with that, 200 versus 400 feet. I, I think I would make the motion for the first 200 feet and 20 feet wide to make that alternative motion. Was that all that was on there? Okay. No pay, okay. So grant the exception request of the right-of-way, 40 feet along Boyer. No paving at their place, but paving at the first 200 feet from Murray Road for a width of 20 feet down Boyer, and no curb sidewalks or landscaping.
Yeah. Through, through the Chair, I think what you would be, your motion would probably be to approve the exception as requested by the applicant, because that, that is what they're actually asking for, is an exception to all of those. But they also are proposing to, to pave that first 200 feet to 20 feet in width.
Right. So their proposal was first 200 feet, 20 feet wide. So I'd just go with their exception. Yes. Thank you.
To be clear for the motion, that it should eliminate-
Your mic on.
To be clear for the motion, it should eliminate Public Works' conditions of approval, item 2.5A, 2.5B, 2.5C, and replace it with the proposed paving on Bowlier at Murray Road.
That is correct.
All right. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Trip, you're up.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Melanie McCawber?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous. Ah, that brings us on to item number three. Matole Camp and Retreat Center Special Permit in the Petolia area? And we'll take a staff report, please. That's a good point.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me correct?
Yes.
My name's Jacob Dunn. I'm the assigned planner for Matole Camp and Retreat Center. Sorry. The Matole Camp and Retreat Center is applying for a special permit to approve a demolition and, of an existing caretaker's residence and garage, which will be replaced with a new caretaker's residence and garage within a stream site management area. This project's located along the Matole River in the Petolia area. Here's an aerial image for the location of the Matole Camp and Retreat Center. The project's located on the north side of Matole Road, approximately 1.45 miles from the intersection of Crooked Teeth Road on Matole Road and on the address 36841 Matole Road. The access is from Matole Road heading north on Matole Camp Road. This parcel is zoned unclassified with the land use designation of agricultural grazing and residential agriculture. The parcel is 13.42 acres. The applicant's applying for a special permit to demolish the existing residence and garage and replace it with a new caretaker's residence and garage, which will be further away from the stream site management area. The caretaker's residence is no longer sufficient for the activities that are taking place on the property since it's been deemed unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The proposed location for the new structure is 10 feet northwest of the existing structure, and half of the footprint of the new unit will be within the footprint of the existing unit. The new residence will be connected to an existing pump, then transport sewage to an onsite wastewater system, which is located outside of the stream site management area, and water is sourced from an existing spring onsite. Biological report was prepared by SHN in October of 2021 to assess the impacts of the proposed project. The existing residence proposed for demolition is approximately 20 feet from the edge of the riparian woodland, and the garage is, that's proposed for demolition is approximately 10 feet from that edge of riparian woodland. The proposed structure to be, for replacement is going to be placed 30 feet away from the edge of riparian woodland, which will be 10 feet further away from the river and partly within the existing footprint of the, of the residence that's going to be demolished. The recommendations of the biological report are included as a condition, as conditions of approval, which include removing the existing dilapidated fence, constructing a wildlife-friendly fence, removing invasive plant species, planting native species, and minimizing effects on bird and bat species. CDFW has reviewed the report and agreed with the report's recommendations, and they added a condition of no ground disturbance in the drip line of riparian trees with temporary construction fencing, or conducting pre-construction western pond turtle surveys no more than seven days prior to construction. And if turtle nest, sorry, turtle nests are found, then the project should consult with CDFW. As condition, this project is not expected negatively to affect biological resources. This project was referred to the Northwest Information Center and Bear River Band in Ronarville, Ranchearia. The Northwest, Northwest Information Center recommended consultation with the appropriate tribes, and the Bear River Band recommended a cultural resource study. The study that they did was completed by the Archaeological Research and Supply Company in January of 2022, and the results of that survey indicated one isolated resource, which will not be disturbed as a result of the project. Note for the archaeological work is recommended for this project, and inadvertent archaeological discovery protocol has been included as a condition. So typically, special permits for special stream site management areas are approved administratively. So we sent a notice of intent to approve the project on, to, sorry, to occupants within 300 feet on June 8th, and a request for public hearing was received on June 24th from a concerned neighbor, which resulted in this planning commission hearing today, and a separate notice was sent to occupants within 300 feet for this meeting. The county received comment on Wednesday, so July 20th, which addressed concerns particularly concerning an exception or granting an exemption to the stream site management areas and wetlands ordinance, allowing the project to be considered a minor addition, proposed work causing erosion and discharge into the Matole River, no proposed monitoring, proximity of the residence to be demolished from the top bank, and concerns about the septic system. To address those concerns, firstly, the applicant has not requested any exceptions to the county, or to the standards, and the county is not granting an exemption to the stream site management areas and wetlands ordinance. The special permit that's being sought is in accordance with the ordinance, and the applicant has completed the necessary reports to mitigate the impacts to a less than significant impact of mitigation. This project is not considered a minor addition and doesn't qualify for the exemptions that are listed in the stream site management ordinance. A biological report was also, that was completed for the project, added a condition for item, condition number five, item L and M, which require best, best management practices for erosion and removal of the demolished material to prevent leaching into the Matole River. Monitoring wasn't recommended by SHN or CDFW, but the county may recommend adding a condition that would require all restoration work to be completed prior to the finalization of the building permit. And the, the structures to be demolished are 10 to 20 feet away from the edge of riparian woodland, and they don't actually hang from the bank of the Matole River. And lastly, the septic system has been evaluated by DEH, and the project has been conditioned to receive a modification permit for a new pump chamber when applying for the building permit. So this concludes my presentation, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for Jacob? Go ahead, Noah.
Thanks, Jacob, for that, for that report. And I did review the biological report and also the letter from the concerned neighbor. So while I certainly agree that, given the current state of the property as outlined in that biological report, this, this project, if approved, would, would be a net benefit to the location, given the existing dilapidated structures and wildlife unfriendly materials that are there that'll be removed, and the native, non-native plants and so forth. But to the question about, you know, why, why allow this new structure to be built as close to the river as they're asking, even though it is 10 feet away? I guess that's, my question is, given the existing septic system and the power drop, could this project, or could this new building be pushed back further from the river than what the applicant is proposing? Or, or is the location that they're proposing somehow as far away from the river as it can be? I hope that question makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I would say that the location, there's a chance that it could be in a different location, but given the fact that there was an existing residence there, and there's already a pre-disturbed area, and that the infrastructure's already been in place in that area, that's why the applicant is choosing this area to place it, if possible. applicant is choosing this area to place it, if possible, just mostly given that if they choose a new area, there would need to be new disturbance for infrastructure, and then also new ground disturbance, rather than using part of the area that's already been pre-disturbed.
Okay, yeah, thanks. That, that does answer the question. That sort of explains the rationale for doing it still within the disturbed area of the existing dilapidated residence, rather than putting it totally outside the stream management area, but in a place that's undisturbed that would have other impact. So, okay, thanks for answering that.
Any other questions before we open up public comment? All right. With that, I will open up public comment. If there's anybody who wishes to speak on this, go ahead. I'm trying to get, uh, public, oh, they just, 4549, go ahead. Are you there, 4549? Well, they took their hand down, too, so. Is there anybody here that cares to speak? Oh, there we go. Okay, go ahead, 4549. After them, you go, go ahead, thank you. If they, star six to unmute yourself. They seem to be having a hard time. Go ahead, sir, come on up. We'll come back and try it one more time.
My name is Gene Callahan, and I'm, I'm the rep for the Camp Matol, and it was my idea to tear down the old house. We had a fire there, and it's old, and it should be condemned, and I just wanted you guys to know that we're already about 25 feet off the bank and 80 feet from the river, and we propose moving 90 to 95 feet off the river, move it back up the hill. And I don't know if I missed the first part of the meeting, if Jacob mentioned that the old footprint was a little over 1,600 square feet, and our new footprint is only 880 square feet, and we've moved it back up the hill, but we have a septic tank pump already there, we have a water system already there, we have PG knee already there, and it's an ideal location at the beginning of the camp, and that the property kind of pinches into a little narrow there. We really can't move it up the hill anymore without going where our driveway goes. And so we just thought we were doing everybody a favor by building a nicer little building in a better location.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Callahan? All right, thank you. All right, let's try public 4549 one more time. Hi, go ahead.
So, just a couple of clarifications. So my family and I are the only people within 300 feet of the church camp, and we have a great relationship with Lee Dadieni and other members of the board of the Presbyterian Church. So this isn't a personal thing, this is a concern about the Matol River thing. So there is a chicken coop that's hanging off the bank of the river, and I don't know the distance from the existing dilapidated structures from the bank, but it's very close, and I agree that those structures need to be demolished. It appears that the plan has mitigations for preventing, you know, sediment and erosion due to grading and all of that. I think that there are other options for relocating the building, but I know that it's the planning commission and the building department's scope of work to approve projects. So I know that, I haven't seen exactly where the new footprint of the proposed new construction, exactly how far away from the river it is, but it is within the stream management area. So again, the county continues to make exceptions to the stream management area ordinance. Again, it's the Matol River. I think that proposing monitoring of the project, make sure that all the conditions are met, should be required, and I would also like the planning commission to consider that any pertinent development to the house, such as decks, gardens, parking, chicken coops, et cetera, all those things that existed with the old construction occur up slope from the new construction, so that it isn't just that the new proposed garage and new proposed two-story house, it was a one-story house, the new proposed two-story house, that if, if they're not going to budge on the SMA, then any other type of development, which will occur because it's a rural property, people are going to have gardens and dogs and chicken coops and all of that, that that has to be up slope from the new construction, so that there isn't further development encroaching further closer to the Matol River. And, you know, I do feel like there's a pattern of disregard for SMA ordinance setbacks, and, you know, it's a concern of mine, and I appreciate your time, that, that's really all I've got to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. So what are our thoughts? Go ahead, Noah.
Well, I, I am really fond of the Matol River, and the, the letter writer, who I think is the person who just spoke, made some really good points about the impairments that have been, that it has suffered, and that a great deal of work and a great deal of money has gone into protecting and restoring the Matol. But, and, and I, I kind of am inclined to agree in principle with the idea that, that we really ought to, to have a stream management area mean no development, and if there's a chance to put it outside of that area, that we ought to take it. But, you know, when I looked at the biological report, which is really quite thorough, showing just how bad it currently is, and just how many improvements would be made to that current location as part of it, and with the additional clarifications from, you know, the Mr. Callahan and from Jacob Dunn about why they kind of do need to tie it into the existing location to take advantage of the disturbed area that's already been disturbed without breaking ground on a whole new area, using, you know, it would take a lot more resources to put in a whole new septic and leach field and that sort of thing somewhere else. They kind of have to do it here. It seems like if they're going to do it, without making it a much bigger project, and, and it is also going to be a smaller footprint, and all of the places that were disturbed are going to be restored with native plants and so forth. So I guess I feel like this is a case where, while we are allowing some development in the streamside management area, we are also cleaning up a lot of past mess in the process, and, and so that seems like a net benefit to me. So I'm, I'm pretty much in, in favor of this project.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think that this project, any project, of course, inherently there are trade-offs. I think that this one achieves the best result with the least amount of impact, so I'm, I would also be in favor of it as it is proposed.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I would, if I can just quickly get to that page. Thank you. I would move that we find that we've considered this project as categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15302 and 15304 of the SEQA guidelines, make all of the required findings for approval of the special permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Matol Camp and Retreat Center Special Permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Noah.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion? We'll call the trip.
Melanie McAlver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous. All right. Well, that brings us to something we don't usually get to this early in the evening. Item number H, adjournment. Is there anything else you want to talk about, Director, before?
Not for me tonight.
What, Trip, you want to stay longer? Oh, okay. Yes, go ahead, Brian.
So next week is supposed to be our special meeting, and I know that there's been a lot going on with that. Is there any possibility or discussion that that would be postponed further at this point?
That is not our plan. We are in full gear to be here next Thursday night. We are finalizing the staff report and the agenda first thing in the morning, and so you'll be getting that tomorrow. You should already have the DEIR and the FEIR, and have been able to look at those. We sent out a small errata that's only two pages long. I know that's a little different for this project, but, so, the staff report will be large, their resolutions will be large.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
A question, and that will be the only thing on that agenda?
There will be a consent calendar, including the action summaries that were previously pulled off. That'll all be on there, and I think we've got, and Trip's done a great job on this, got that all straightened out, all consistent, all, all that done. And we plan on bringing the letter forward that the commission had asked for relative to rainwater catchment, and if, if you have time for that, great, or maybe, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Great.
Thanks. Mike basically asked my question, but also you just mentioned an errata to the FEIR, just a couple pages. Was that sent, was that emailed, or is that, where would I find that?
It should, it should have been sent out to you if it wasn't. I apologize. I'll make sure that we send that out. We'll resend it out with the agenda packet. It's, it's really very short. We, there was one comment that we did not respond to, and there were some answers that were missing words, and so we've put the words in, and that's red line strikeout so you can see exactly what the changes are.
And it's, it's entirely possible that I did get it and just kind of missed it, but I just wanted to make sure that I knew how to find it, so thank you.
All right. Anything else? I guess we're adjourned, then we'll see you in a week.